This is Lewisburg. And welcome to our June 10th Town Council meeting. Thank you for coming out and also thank you for coming to this location. We're still making repairs at our normal location downtown. Hopefully in our July meeting, we will be back down there. So thank you for coming out here to this one. Okay, we'll begin by having our roll call by our clerk.
Mayor Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Stover.
Here.
Councilwoman Wood.
Here.
Councilwoman Stein.
Here.
Councilwoman Baker.
Here.
Councilwoman Wright. Councilman Clancy.
All right, next is our invocation there. Sean, do you mind just repeating this out?
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for your many blessings. We pray today that you will be with us. Give this council guidance and direction as we take the town of Lewisburg forward. We thank you for all that you do. We ask that you would help us to come together and take our community forward. We ask all these things in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four is the adoption of the agenda. Could I get a motion? And second for the adoption of the agenda for this evening?
Mayor, can I add something to the agenda for this evening? Under 13B is what I would state it to be. Last week during our economic development meeting, we unanimously stated that we would consider changing the time of the meeting to six o'clock instead of seven. Is there any way that we can go ahead and take action on that this evening?
Okay, and when did you want to make that effective? After the July?
You want to start in August, maybe?
Well, we could start June. Maybe let's set it for the...
It didn't. I'm using.
Okay.
Do you want to start in July or August?
Well, we can discuss it when we put it on the agenda. How about that? Let's do one thing at a time.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to amend the agenda. Put it on the item 13, 13A for discussion for the change of our meeting time from seven to six. Did I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we add that to the agenda. It's 13A to move the time from seven to six. So we'll put that on there for discussion at 13A. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go ahead. Okay. Now, could I get a motion to accept the agenda with the changes as we've indicated?
I move that we adopt the amended agenda.
It's seconded. Been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the amended agenda for this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number five, the approval of our amendments. We had three sets of minutes during the month of June and one during the month of May and including June. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes for May 13, 2025, our regular meeting and closed session meetings? And also our May 30th, 2025 budget workshop minutes, as well as the June 5th, 2025 budget workshop minutes. No changes. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I have an amendment change to the May 30th budget workshop meeting. There was a lot of really good information in this. There is one thing that was a directive that was stated by yourself to our interim police chief and it happened to make the newspaper regarding the fact that the town of Lewisburg is strongly, should still follow the guidelines of DEI hiring practices. And that was not in the minutes. Is there any way that we could? I'm sure that the clerk has the exact verbiage that was used, but perhaps we could add that to the minutes to the meeting and then approve them?
Okay, let me make sure what you're saying now. Regarding a statement that I made regarding DEI?
Yes, sir.
Okay, clarify that again.
You made a directive during that meeting to the interim chief of police that the standards of hiring for the town of Lewisburg are still under the influence of DEI hiring, although it's not currently popular in today's government. I just need that to be stated.
That was a directive that was included for the fire chief.
Of fire police? It was the police chief that was talking about hiring additional staff. Regardless, it was a directive that was made by you. It was in the newspaper, but it did not make the minutes.
Okay, so noted. Okay. Could I get a motion to approve those minutes as well? Given the amended change as well as the June 5th, 2025 budget workshop meeting minutes? Including, okay?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the minutes for May 13, 2025, regular meeting and closed session minutes, as well as the May 30th meeting, 2025 budget workshop meeting with the amended changes and then the June 5th meeting, the budget workshop minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number six on the board, the public comments. This is the time, ladies and gentlemen, that we set aside three minutes for anyone from the public to come forward and if they have any comments or any information they'd like to share with the council, you can now do it at this time. If anyone? Okay.
Mary Kay Lee, 120 Jolly Street, Lewisburg, North Carolina. I thank you for letting me come before you yet again. I've been spending more time in downtown Lewisburg. Normally my time is spent around Jolly Street, either living there or at the interfaith council. But I have been so impressed and so excited about the new businesses. And I just wanted to say that publicly. You know, I spend a lot of time on Facebook and I see us compared to Franklinton all the time. Nothing against Franklinton. I love going to Franklinton. But it is just such a joy to be downtown now. The Zen River Spa, I could live there. Just love that place. Thrifty's, if you haven't been in there, you need to go. We have the new store, the houseware store over on Nash Street. On the other side of Nash and on down, we have Sweet and Savory. And I mean, this lady is a courant blue chef. We are very fortunate. And just learning now, thank you, thank you for continuing the DEI standards. I'm very proud of Lewisburg for doing that. Thank you.
Anyone else? No, we'll move on to item seven. This is our regular monthly report from our EDC. Ms. Star.
Good evening. This is Fast and Furious. First of all, we want to thank you for hiring the events director. The Friday Night on the Tar was just amazing. There were so many new vendors. There was a big, nice crowd of people. It was a good... I think it will help, that hiring will help promote our town. And I think that we thought that was a really good thing. One of our recommendations, the website is a mess. It really is. And possibly, but until you're able to do something budgetarily, you maybe just take it down and put under construction on it. Just something so that, I mean, we... There are items on there for that it happened in 2022. There's registration events for things that are no longer happening. And so best just to take it down and say, under construction until a time that the town council has the opportunity to take that on. We are not meeting in July while we see what goes on with your budget and we'll talk to you in August again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would just...
Yes?
Just take this point at this time being that, since you say you're not going to be in July. I want to thank you for the time that you've met so far. And I wanted to reassure you guys that the recommendations that you make to the town does not go unfounded. We really, really listen to you. We see this committee as a bridge from the community to the council, the mayor. So sometime you may not think that we are listening, but we are. And as this new economic development person comes on board, that person will be our liaison, your committee, to the town council. That way, you know, we can make sure that there's a complete dialogue between the two. And just wanted just to say that.
Thank you all. House, that's inspirational.
All right.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I was just going to talk to Sean regarding the website. Since we do have some critical things like online bill pay, the agendas and minutes, maybe just a splash page with some basic links to those items? If that is what we did.
Item number eight, ordinance to amend the town's code of ordinance. Chapter 20, Article 1, Section 20-14, fire protection to require knock boxes for a commercial building. Mr. Salabine.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, the first case we have before us is an amendment to the fire protection ordinance to require knock boxes for all commercial buildings in town. This was recommended by our chief, Russell Fuller, as a protection for not only the businesses, but our fire safety businesses. It allows ease of access for the fire department just in case there's an emergency. If there's ever a fire, the fire department has to usually break down doors in order to enter a building. This would eliminate that. All businesses would be required to install the steel boxes outside their businesses so that Chief Fuller and the fire department could enter if there was ever an emergency. It allows them quicker access to the building to put out the fire and it saves business owners money in the long run. So staff would ask the council to approve this motion.
Yes.
How much are these boxes going to cost, the average business?
These boxes, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong here. I'm thinking they cost, from my research, about $400. About $400 per box.
Is there a timeline in order, asking in order for them to install these?
Yes. What we would do is all new businesses would be required to install them upon receiving a zoning permit. And then all existing businesses, we would give them a time period to come into compliance. Maybe a couple of months, three, six months to come into compliance with it.
Okay, now, who would have? Fire department and I assume the business owner also would have access to this?
Really only the fire department would have access. The business owners take their business keys, put them inside the box, and then the fire department, there's a mechanism to unlock the boxes. The fire department will have a key to all the boxes. And they'll be the only ones with the key to the box. And before, now, let me say this. Now, there is a concern that was raised is that, okay, we're stopping Joe from coming up to a business and breaking into the knock box and going inside the business, right? Well, this is a steel box. And like I said, the mechanism to unlock it is very unique. You have to have one of those mechanisms to unlock the box. And then the flip side of that is, if they're going to go steal, why even break into the box? They're just going to break into the building. You know, why break into the box when you could just break down the window?
We have questions from Mr. Salabine regarding this.
So is the fire department going to enforce the window to have them completed? I mean, obviously, that's going to be...
That would be planning department code enforcement.
Code enforcement, yeah.
Have you let the businesses know that this was, you're planning this?
We have, I have alerted all new businesses that have come into town recently about the change and about the upcoming possibility of knock boxes being required. As far as existing businesses, so we have not notified all the businesses. And that's why, like you said, we need a timeframe, at least probably six months to get the word out, let them know. And then, you know, I think personally, I assume that businesses would want this because it's a safety feature. So they'll try to comply as soon as possible. Most, I'm sure most of them will. And if they don't, then at the end of that period, we would say, okay, this is the cutoff date. You need to install it by this date. If it's not installed, then yes, there will be a penalty for that.
I do think you should, I understand that with new businesses.
Yes, sir.
I do think you need to talk to the existing businesses as well. Get their feedback. See what they, see what they think about it. You know, I'm sure safety is on, you know, is a concern of theirs and protection for their business in case of fire. But still like to have that information as to what they, what they feel about it.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great idea for all of those reasons, but my wonder, it must be a longer period for existing businesses because we have a lot of newer businesses that just, I know that struggle to start making the cash flow work. That this $400 is not a lot, a lot of money, but it is still a lot of money when you're struggling to make the ends meet with a new business. Yeah. So to make sure people have adequate time and aren't overly burdened by this.
So is this only for occupied buildings? Say if I have an unoccupied building downtown, is still a requirement or does it have to be an open, active business?
It would be for all commercial enterprises who restore hazardous materials. It would be for any commercial facility that is open. Yes, open. That is operating, yes. And then, or facilities who have a system which transmit off-site alarms for fire protection and suppression. So it doesn't just include commercial businesses. It includes businesses who house hazardous materials as well as commercial facilities with the offices.
Is there a way for the fire department to know if this is on the front or the back door of the business?
They would, they would all be installed in the front. They would all be installed. They would be required to be installed in the front.
Any other questions?
Yes, this is common practice in a lot of other communities.
It is, yes. It's common practice in a lot of communities. Actually, I got this template for the requirements from the city of Oxford. So they do require it. It is common in a lot of cities, yes. It's just a safety thing. The fire department chiefs, they realize that is, you know, sometimes it's necessary, especially when it's hazardous materials, for sure.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Salabine? If not, could I get a motion for approval?
I think it must be critical.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the ordinance to amend the town council's code of ordinance. Chapter 20, Article 1, Section 20-14, fire protection, require knock boxes for commercial buildings. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Salabine for that. All in this pass. All right, item number nine. Social district ordinance. And this is the discussion. Mr. Salabine.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The social district ordinance is a discussion because this is something that is new to our town, obviously. As with knock boxes, there are a number of jurisdictions around us who have implemented social districts. The state of North Carolina has allowed municipalities to operate social districts within an area governed by the town or municipality. This was proposed and this would be our first shot at a social district. So I felt that it would be fair to citizens of the town as well as the council because it's not a safety issue to have an open discussion about it. So in your graphics that I provided for you, it has a map of the boundary of the social district. So first, I want to talk about what was proposed in the boundary. The boundary would go from East Nash Street in front of Three Lions Pub to West Nash Street in front of 102 West Nash Street, which is right beside Town Hall. That boundary, the southern boundary, would only be on the northern part of East Nash Street. So if you picture it, East Nash Street would be split in the middle down to, and...
Mayor, I thought we decided to drive through that.
We talked about that, yes, sir. And when it was originally proposed, it was both sides of the street. When me and Dr. Stover originally discussed it, however, from concerns from police and fire, that we probably should keep it on the side of the street where the businesses are located.
Second of business.
And that's why this is an open discussion. It's because I don't want to make that decision.
What is the objections from police and fire?
Well, there, one objection was there are businesses on the southern portion of Nash Street, but not retail, not as many retail businesses. Mostly county offices and/or government offices.
There are now two new retail businesses and a third.
Where...
The whole idea of this, we got the print shop, Car Hill Interiors, and the Kingsley's are planning on opening a second store next to their Car Hill Interiors.
You are correct, yes, sir. And down on this end of East Nash Street, it was recommended that we do not have the social district on that side. Now, West Nash Street in front of Three Tar River Interiors, we may be able to implement the social district on that side.
There's also a venue directly across from Three Lions Pub.
Correct. And the venue, they operate private parties. So we thought that it may not be the best idea to have a social district.
It would complicate things.
It would complicate things, yes. There would be some sort of discrepancy.
There's also a store next to them.
That's true. And that does not prohibit people from drinking alcoholic beverages in a social district and traveling to those stores. They just can't take the alcoholic beverage with them outside of the district. So it still, in essence, does bring foot traffic to downtown, but because of concerns, we don't necessarily think it might be the best idea to have. People go from that side of the street to the other side of the street where there's not as many retail businesses, at least on the portion of East Nash Street where that venue is and then the county offices that go back up the hill. Along North Main Street, it would be on both sides of North Main Street, going up to the post office on the west side and then going up to the community station on the east side of Main Street. So it would be both sides of Main Street. It would stop at the Purple Dot Piercing on the western portion of Main Street and stop at the community station on the eastern part of North Main Street.
How do you enforce that?
The only way to enforce it is PD. Pretty much PD would have to be in the area.
I mean, what are we going to do? Assign police to this area during these hours?
Not necessarily.
Well, that's what he's saying.
Well, we assign police to enforce any of our other... Franklinton does not do that. Youngsville does not do that.
I understand that trying to enforce that though.
If somebody has noticed violating it, you can report it to the police. But we're not going to have police out there on a day-by-day basis patrolling this to make sure that people don't step over the line. There will be signs, Franklinton has signs at the ends of their districts. It says right here, "Social district stops here. You may not take an alcoholic beverage past this point." All right? If a police officer or a citizen happens to see somebody do that, then enforcement action can be taken. But you're not going to have a police officer standing there at the sign making sure nobody walks past it.
I hope not.
Yes, yes, that is correct. And maybe they may be on a sort of a rolling patrol. In theory, they might come by every, you know, while the district is going on because it has set hours from 5:00 PM to 11:00 on Friday and then from 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM on Saturday. So maybe twice, three times during those five or six hours that police might roll.
At this point, it's not legal to have an open beverage anywhere throughout downtown. And it's not like they sit right there to look for people that might come wandering out. So I don't see that being all that different.
And, okay, so the next point would be, it would include all of the area for Friday night on the tar, from the community station down south to the businesses where Two Ten Nash, Matt Wings, and then the amphitheater as well, and then back over to Three Lions Pub on Spring Street. So it would pretty much encompass the area Friday night on the tar and then just the sidewalks in front of the businesses on other streets. Who will be able to possess these, of course, 21 years of older? And the two ways that you can purchase them, or this is open for discussion again, is either the business has to supply a cup for the committee with the business's logo on the cup, or we thought maybe the town of Lewisburg provides cups to the businesses. Can the businesses sell the cups that way? Again, that's open for discussion, whichever way we think as a whole might be best.
So does this eliminate the need for the police department to do ID checks on Friday night, correct?
It eliminates the need for ID checks. It eliminates the need for barricades, for most of the barricades.
Within the events.
Within the events.
Not the traffic barricades.
Not the traffic control barriers. And it would reduce the resources because we wouldn't need as many police officers at the tent checking IDs. So a couple of other officers could have to now.
Paying all the expense for the barriers makes very bright.
We spent a considerable amount of time setting up those barriers as well yesterday on Friday.
So question number one, liability. How does this affect the town's liabilities?
Well, the liability is moved from the town to the business because they're the ones selling out. And so anything that would arise, it would be, from the business's standpoint, it would be, hey, you have to control who buys alcohol in your business.
So no liability?
So no liability from the town's standpoint.
Okay. And then how do we address the fact that basically in the heart of this amphitheater, we have a playground for children?
Honestly, there are a number of other towns and cities that have... playgrounds or, or children-related areas near, in, in social districts. I, I don't think that would be a problem because
It's no different. We already sell alcohol within Friday night on the tar.
Yeah.
Adults, adults shouldn't be responsible with it.
That's
This will also help a lot of our businesses on Friday night. With the whole idea of Friday night on the tar, it was created by a previous EDC, was to help businesses downtown. And then we turn around and put barriers up so you can't get into the business. And like Ron Cogs, he has to set up a kiosk. He cannot open his bar because he has all his personal people, all his people out running the kiosks. Now, he can make a choice. He can do a kiosk, or he can open his bar, and people can do it for, I grew up, I guess is a better term. But we had incidences in previous Friday night on the tar where some of our citizens wouldn't try and buy a Coke out of Two Ten, and the police wouldn't let them bring it in. So that's, again, defeating the whole purpose of having Friday night on the tar is to increase foot traffic in our local businesses. And by doing this, we can eliminate these barriers. People can have free access to all the businesses that are within the social district. I, I still don't see the purpose of cutting off south side of Nash Street. I mean, what are we worried about? People going to break into the county office?
Well, that, that's the next question. Is there any, I don't want to say regulations or rules, concern the fact that Main Street is a state road, and there are county, what, four, four or five buildings related to the county in the area? Is that a problem? If people, I'll say the word wonder, under their property with an open liquor container, is that an issue, or is the county good with that?
I don't think it's an issue only because the sidewalk's public. So if you're on the sidewalk, things not.
It doesn't give people access to buildings. It gives people access to the sidewalk.
You know, but I don't think that's, that's an issue at all if people are walking by and without alcoholic beverages, as long as they don't go into the county's property. But, you know, yeah, sidewalks are public, so people can, this is like that with every social district that I've seen.
Doesn't give people permission to take alcoholic beverages into any building. That is up to the individual building owner, if they want to allow people to bring those in, to give people permission to carry them on the public spaces, parking lot, the amphitheater, and the sidewalks.
And, and it won't be a problem with DOT either because they'll be on the sidewalk. We're not going to close any roads. They won't be allowed to go on the road with alcohol. They'll just be on the sidewalks.
So how do they cross the street?
Well, they, right, but it's not, it's not illegal to do that either.
Yeah, outside of Friday night on the tar, you're just saying the road wouldn't be barricaded off. You could use the crosswalk, but he wouldn't be congregating in the street.
This, this just opens it up to a regular and more frequent, so that we can help drive foot traffic to them.
If, if the council doesn't object, I'd like to make a comment. I think as far as the cups go, I think it needs to be the business owners if they wish to do that, because I think if we supply the cups, we may open ourselves up to more like DOT. So I think the town needs to recuse itself from that, let the business owners make the cups.
That would make the, the identifying features easier, since each business needs to have their logo on it, whether it's a sticker or the cup itself.
Mr. Medlin, have you reached out at all to our insurance carrier just to double, triple check anything?
A lot of other municipalities, even in Franklin County, have adopted these with no incident. I don't think that's really a concern. And Friday night on the tar has existed for like eight years now.
Yeah, I know it's probably popular right now.
And we have Lincoln's predecessor, on my request, talked with several of the other police departments in the county, and they have not had any major issues with this.
And one more thing, the last part was, for, up for discussion is pets. Should pets be allowed in the district during the social district hours? Like I said, the hours will be from Friday, five PM to eleven PM, Saturday, five PM to twelve AM on Sunday.
No, my opinion.
Yes, sir.
And the reason I'm strongly in favor of allowing pets is there are a lot of towns that are promoting their downtown areas by becoming pet friendly. There's a town that we visited in Tennessee a couple of years ago, Franklin, Tennessee, just south of Nashville. I mean, they have gone overboard. They have signs up on all their stores. I mean, it's up to the store whether they allow them in, but the vast majority do. They put out things to, to like water and biscuits for the pets. And of course, there would be the standard rules. You've got to be on a leash. You've got to clean up after them. And if there's any bad behavior by the dog, then it's, has to leave, and then not come back. But this is something that's become, there's a lot of people who have pets that want to bring them when they go out. You've been in Ron's place, there regularly, pets in there all the time.
And the, and all the concern with pets was if a pet is being unruly or thought of as vicious, where's, where do we draw the line? How does, how do you determine that? How do you determine if, hey, your dog is too unruly to enter here, but this dog isn't? So that, that was the only concern that we had with enforcing the petition.
And the opinion of our officers, we want the same thing with a lot of other things, you know, common sense.
I think in general, pets would be fine, again, leashed and following all the current regulations, but for Friday night on the tar, personally, I'm very in favor of keeping that rule in place that we don't allow them, because, again, I have dogs. I take them lots of places. But that event is so loud and it's crowded that even a well-behaved, well-trained dog, you don't know how they'd react in that environment, and just it's too much traffic and excitement. That I don't think they should, I think we should keep that restriction in place, but maybe just a regular Friday or Saturday night. I don't have an issue with it.
There won't, there won't be enough music, there won't.
Yeah.
I disagree, but I'm not going to.
Yeah, it's in a perfect world, the dog is always well behaved, but you, you can't even know what a good dog will do when it's stressed. And there are people out there who don't understand that their dogs are less than well behaved, and it's just easier to make the blanket rule for an event like that.
I think there is another aspect that is not, right. We need to mandate that people clean up on pets. That, we've got that now, but we don't provide much of a way for them to do that. We, we really need more trash receptacles, not just in the social district, but up and down Main Street and some of the other adjoining streets. I've heard that complaint repeatedly. I mean, and I take mine out, and I clean up, but a lot of times I'm, I've got to walk around for a half hour with a bag full of you-know-what, because I can't, I don't have any place to put it. So I think we really need to stress the need to put out more public receptacles in our public spaces.
I have to agree with Cam on just keeping, you know, a Friday night on the tar is keeping the animals away, because it is a lot of music, a lot of traffic. You have a lot of mom and kids, and they can't get over the stigma with the lot going on.
For the social district, you say?
Yeah, it's just regular Friday, Saturday night. I don't have any issues. Because now Tar Banks and the pub both allow animals, and there's been few incidents. I know Two Ten had one recently, but that was maybe an unleashed pet. I, I don't know all the details of that.
That was the last, I think, question.
Any other questions, counsel, on this?
Um, I guess regarding the division of Nash Street, since this is just a discussion, could we take that back to perhaps Chief Lincoln and some of our stakeholders on the other side of the street? Whether they agree with it, or they really want it to be, like Sean's here tonight, but can't exactly pull you into the conversation, but, but, yeah, the print shop owner, everybody else, just because it may be, they're fine with it, or if they really want to push for it, and we can work something out. I don't want anyone to feel excluded or like they weren't included in the discussion.
Absolutely. He is one of the three.
No other questions? We'll move on to item number ten. Ordinance to amend the town of Lewisburg zoning map per parcel number zero one six five nine one from B three to R two. Mr. Sadowite?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. This amendment would be a rezoning of one parcel on Bun Road. It is the parcel right behind Zenis Flooring. I printed out graphics so you can see exactly where, where the parcel is. The applicant would like to rezone this parcel for the purposes of constructing two single-family attached townhomes on the line. It'll just be two units, right, side by side in that, in that one parcel. And currently, the current zoning, which is B three neighborhood business, does not allow or any type of household living, even a single-family house, even one house, it doesn't allow for that. So the applicant would like to construct those two townhomes there, and has to do this rezoning as part of that process. Right now, this would be a downzoning, and because of the laws in North Carolina, the applicant had to sign pretty much their application stating that they would be okay with the downzoning, and also that the reasoning for their downzoning, which is she wants to construct two single-family attached homes. Yes, sir.
The diagram we set out, came out in the past, oh, we, right. It, it shows this facing on him, though. This property doesn't touch him.
The, the, that's correct. That's correct, absolutely.
And it also showed parking in the rear. How are they going to access parking in the rear to this?
This was provided by the applicant. I'm sorry about that. So the front would be Bun Road, and the applicant would like to have a alleyway access aside to access the back, and there would be parking in the rear.
But it went down by their, their store?
Correct, yes, sir.
So they remove the fence that's already right there?
Correct, yes.
And it'll be in, in behind the store and the residence in front of it, in that backyard corner there?
That's right, yes, sir. And, and again, the applicant realizes that this does not approve them to do any kind of construction. It only approves them for the rezoning. So their architect and designer will have to come up with a plan to make this fit, or reduce the square footage of the proposed dwelling.
So it's a store and a light pole, and then it's a residence. Very high profile.
Right. And, and I'd explain that to the applicant as well, that they may have to cut down the fence in the back of Zenis and, in, in turn, use that as, as part of this. Cut down that fence, move that fence back, and
I'm just trying to figure out how you're going to do it, like, two family
Uh, two, two attached townhomes. It's, it's, it's one, it's one dwelling with two residences, two units.
It's going to be a top five floor.
Two-story.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be two-story. Yeah, right, right. I'm kind of, I'm kind of worried to a bit, yeah. Yeah, but it, it'll be two stories. So across the street, there are two single-family dwellings that are both two stories. It'll look similar to that, but they'll be attached. So it'll be essentially the same thing across the street.
They don't have a lot of yard.
No, nope. It could be a good thing.
Is this our first townhome like this that we would have in the town of Lewisburg?
Yes, actually, yes. Yes, it is. Most, the other ones are all duplexes. Up near the library, up near the Franklin County Library, there are some more duplexes that are similar to this. Right, right. But this will be a townhome that goes to two stories. Right, right, right.
And I understand that this is for rezoning, but if you look at what we're putting on such a small lot, double-story, extra close, is this something that our fire department would even take care of? God forbid, and, I mean
Well, well, because it's so close to the road, I, I would think that there wouldn't be an issue with that, because it's so close to the road.
And there's a fire hydrant nearby.
Right.
It's right. It, it's open, even though it's tight space, it's still an open space.
They could access it.
It's an open space. It's a small space, but it's still an open space.
And it, it would be Bun Road, so that I don't think the fire department would have a problem accessing it.
Well, I'm not worried about them getting to it. The dwelling is what my concern is. The, the townhome dwellings. It, it's not, it's probably not the same thing as a single-family home. It's, you're, you're talking about double the height. I'm just looking at.
Well, it would, it would, and, and that graphic is incorrect as well. It would be two stories, not three. That's three stories. It would, it would be two. Because that is the whole, across the street. Yeah, it would be, it would be, it would be very similar to the houses across, two stories, that same height, thirty-five feet or less. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be better. Yeah, just closer to it.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, motion approved.
If not any other questions, could I get a motion to approve? And a second. Moving properly. Second, that we change our ordinance to amend the town of Lewisburg zoning map from parcel for parcel zero one six five nine one from a B three to a R two. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, there is an additional, to this motion. Let's see, who made that motion? Mr. Stover, could I ask you to amend your motion to include that language here in your motion, please?
That's fine.
We have to read it.
Oh, I gotta read it?
Yeah.
I, I make a motion to approve the request that the parcel identified by Franklin County Tax ID Parcel Number zero one six five nine one be approved for rezoning from neighborhood business B slash three to median density residential R slash two. Given the findings of this request are consistent with the twenty thirty Lewisburg Comprehensive Plan and shown to be in the public interest as the rezoning is more closely similar to the similar, same zoning classification of the surrounding property, and the rezoning supports the redevelopment of the land and the South Main Neighborhood in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan. As a matter of council record, the following motion was given by the town council on June tenth, two thousand and five.
That motion has read by Councilman Stover and second by Councilwoman Baker. You heard that? Could I, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Okay, moving on. Item number eleven. Ordinance to amend the town of Lewisburg zoning map parcel zero three one, three four zero, zero one five, six four six, and West Johnson Street from B one to APDD. Mr. Sadowite?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. Earlier this year, West Johnson Street was abandoned and closed as part of the expansion of the county judicial annex site at one thirteen South Main Street. As a procedural element, when the street is closed, it's divided amongst the Cenalon. We had to go through that process first. This is the next step in the process. This is not rezoning technically. It's adding to the already approved PDD. The county is now adding West Johnson Street, as well as the town lot next to the river where the food truck receptacles are, and as well as the Pal Tammany property to the PDD. So they are mending the previously approved PDD to add those parcels of land. And none of the site elements are changing. None of the elements to the PDD are changing. It will be the same streets, the same lighting, the same landscaping. They've already given us their plan for the judicial complex site. There will be no structures constructed on these three parcels that they are amending to add to the PDD. It, it's just literally adding land to the already approved PDD for the parking, and then for the Sallyport on West Johnson Street. And there should be a site added. The proposed. Final site met.
Does this have to be read also?
If so, I'll make a motion.
Yes, yes, it does. Sorry about that. So the county is moving forward with their project, and they just like our approval to amend the PDD to add the newly-acquired parcels.
Now, would this not affect the Anderson property? Would that be?
It will not affect the Anderson property, since the use of the Anderson property is remaining. Nothing will affect that. It'll just be, adding them to the PDD will just effectively rezone the property so that the setbacks and things will go away, technically. But it won't change the use at all. It won't affect their use at all.
So that will be done, that will not, this will not affect the county to take over the property?
No, no, the county does not own the Powell Tammany property. From my understanding, and the county representatives are here tonight, they're the applicants, so you're allowed to ask them questions as well. But from my understanding, no, the Tammany Powell property will remain under their ownership.
No, what I'm saying is, once we've done it, the PDD, will they come back and take over that property? Even though they don't own it now, but they give them.
If they purchase it, if they purchase it, yes, they could add it later to the county.
Is that property included in the PDD?
Yes, yes, it is. It, the street portion is the portion that they want to use for the Sallyport.
We're gonna have to negotiate with them to get that, right? When we close the street, that part of the street goes to that landowner.
Correct.
But what's that symptom, he's inheriting the man, taking over the property once we've done it?
Because he still owns it. I don't think, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not, now, don't get me wrong. Now, this is, I'm not exactly sure on all the laws that you mentioned there. But I will say that the county has not purchased the property. Mr. Powell and his wife plan to maintain the property, from our knowledge, and it's still there.
But why do we have to include him in this? Why do we have to put that piece of land in this?
Because they're using, like you said, when the street, the Centalon is divided, his portion is part of what they want to use.
But can't we just zone that part of the street and not the building?
Technically, no, because he would have to go and subdivide that property first. He would have to subdivide the parcel and make it two parcels in order to do that. I get what you're saying, and he would have to subdivide.
I know where the lead is coming from, I'm going to hold single place. But one of the major concerns about this project is it ain't gonna stop with it. And we want to protect the rest of the buildings downtown from the county getting a hold of them and tearing them down. I'm gonna be real frank about this. We're already talking about maybe expanding the historic district down there, further protect these buildings. We do not want to lose any more buildings to the judicial complex, period, end of discussion.
And honestly, from a planning and zoning standpoint, there's nothing that we can do to stop that from happening, if it transfers ownership.
That's what I'm thinking we should, subdivide the property and only zone that one little strip and not change the zoning of that building.
That would be up to that property owner, not us. We would need them.
We couldn't do that.
Is this downzoning?
And it's upzoning. And we don't even know what their preferences are. They may be fully on board with this. They're not here to speak for themselves.
We're not talking about what's gonna happen tomorrow. We're worried about what's gonna happen five, ten, fifteen years ago, when, you know, both this board and the county board have changed.
And honestly, again, the only way to stop that would be for the town purposes. Because if it transfers ownership, then the new owner can essentially do what they want. So if the county makes an offer and he accepts it, the county can technically do what they want with the property. There's no, there's no device.
What about if we included the historic district?
That may halt some of the exterior of the building, but they can still, they use, they can still use it for what they want.
And the property owner may not want that.
But that's the whole purpose of the historic district, is to maintain the external structure of the buildings.
Correct, correct. Yeah, so the exterior, yes, we would have advice and controls on the exterior of the building. But if they wanted to use it for county purposes, I get what you're saying, tear it down, then, yes, no, we would be able to slow that process.
That's exactly where our concern is.
Yeah, yeah, we would be able to slow that down.
If the building doesn't get pulled down, if they want to redo the interior as office space or whatever, that's fine. But we want to maintain the exterior structure of the building as a historic structure in our downtown.
Yes, we could slow it down.
We can slow it down. We can create an obstacle, an obstacle, but we could not stop it.
Right. If they really, if it's a, if it's a property owner, in North Carolina, it's really hard to stop a property owner from doing what they want with the property. In effect, we would be in trouble for that. We would get in trouble for that. So we could slow it down by making it historic, and that's a good suggestion, because it is a historic building. A lot of our downtown buildings are historic, and I agree, we should designate that as historic. So if that's something that we want to do, then we would have to, like Councilwoman Baker said, talk to the property owner. He would have to initiate that process. Or their family, excuse me.
Any other questions? All right, Council. Like a motion?
I want a motion. I make a motion to approve the request that the amendment to the planned development district map for the Franklin County Judicial Center Complex, as identified by Franklin County Tax ID Parcels oh three one three four oh, oh one five six four six, and West Johnson Street, be approved, given the findings for this request are consistent with the twenty thirty Lewisburg Comprehensive Plan and shown to be in the public interest, as the amendment will assist in keeping downtown thriving, and it is reasonable in the sense that it will expand county facilities in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan.
There's motion, second? Is there a second?
Doesn't sound like it.
Doesn't sound like it, so if not a second, the motion dies.
And this is further delay.
So that's it? At this moment? Thank you, Mr. Sattler.
Thank you. Thank you. County Attorney Officer Assistant County Manager, Franklin County. As a point of order, it's always been my understanding, and leader of the county attorney's hearing, would you not conduct a public hearing for a rezoning?
No, not, no, not.
Is it because it's not technically a rezoning, or? You explain why this is a little different this time.
Let's play a decision. It's a state's or public hearing.
May I have a town attorney?
Mr. Winston? If it's not technically a rezoning, it's amending the PDD, does that require a legislative hearing? I don't think so. But we're changing the zoning designation on additional parcels, correct? Which would be technically rezoning those subject properties? Yes, in effect, it does rezone those properties. It's a gray line, a legal line, and, yeah, so we may have to do some more research to find out what exactly that entails.
Whether it's legally required or not, I think we could benefit from a hearing, because having those stakeholders, Mr. Powell here, could help quite a lot to speak for his interests.
Speak for his interest to the future.
Yeah.
That may have been the major.
Carving out whatever we need to do, so that property is not included in this.
So that would make the council feel better if he's subided it.
I can't speak for the rest of them.
I don't think they have a hearing, that would be, you know, that way they can keep on their.
Wasn't there signage enough regarding the meeting? Was the signage on their court regarding this?
I did put public hearing, but we don't have a sign for amending a PDD. We don't, we don't have a sign for that.
Well, I think it may not be a bad idea to have a public hearing and to get the land over here, and let's discuss what possibility, ways of carving out his property so it's not in this rezoning or amendment or whatever.
May I suggest that we, since these are big questions, that we just table this particular one until the July meeting? And at that time, we will have to conduct a conversation with the owner, as well as finding out the, you know, get a clarification on all of the ramifications. So when we take this vote, we would, you know, have a much clearer understanding of it, as opposed to trying to do it tonight, where we have some questions. Is that, is that something that the council?
So they have a hearing in on July eight, and they're supposed to try here for the stakeholders' residence?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for that. Thank you, your help, we'll come to you lot.
And we really appreciate reassurance from the county that you're not gonna be going after any of our buildings downtown.
We are not at this point in time, sir.
Well, you know, like I said, you may not be here next year. Maybe a memorandum of agreement or something.
Well, we're hoping to get there. Thank you, Members of Council.
Okay, item number twelve. Resolution for approval of local water supply plan. Brown?
Mayor, Town Council, if it's okay, I will speak on behalf of this. Mr. Brown is not here tonight, and I apologize in advance, there was not a cover sheet memo attached with this. However, I will let you know that the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three fifty-five I requires us to have a public water plan. And for twenty twenty-four, we're asking that you approve a plan that has to be submitted to the state. And in order to submit this plan to the state, we have to have a resolution stating that you all are agreeing that we can create a water plan and submit it to the state. So I'm asking that you make a motion to approve us to submit a water plan to the state for their approval.
Mr. Medlin, have we already gotten a water plan together to submit, or is that the next process?
He has actually created one. We're waiting for the resolution, and then we can change this plan if necessary along the way as we move further in our water studies.
Any other questions, the council? If not, could I get a resolution?
I'll make the motion, but I don't have to read it.
You don't have to read it.
Okay, so move the property second, that we use a resolution for approving the local water supply plan to the state there. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, okay. All right, the eyes have it. Okay, item number thirteen, amendment of the personnel policy regarding fire and police department overtime pay. Mr. Medlin?
Mayor, Town Council, in front of you tonight is a request to change or amend our personnel policy related to the fire and police department overtime pay provision. Currently, we follow, we are following a antiquated plan. It's that we pay every twenty-eight days overtime to our public safety employees. As mentioned in the last month's meeting from PB Mayor's, our auditor, they've recommended that we move forward with that and follow in the state plan, which pays every fourteen days. And actually, this adopts that and covers the issues that we've talked about. With this packet was an old part of our policy in bold that stated how we paid, and then the new policy was the second sheet that stated that we would pay on a fourteen-day period versus a twenty-eight-day pay cycle. And I'm asking that you, in order to come in line with some of their suggestions for the future, I'm asking that you approve the overtime pay provisions for the fire police departments, and this would go affect July first of twenty twenty-five.
Any questions from the council?
Mr. Medlin?
Yes.
If we do this, is there any way that we can adopt and change at the same time the accrual of their vacation and sick time to be put forth every two weeks also? Instead of, is it now once a month?
It is once a month, but I can check with our vendor to see if that's an option. I don't mind to move it if it's an option. I just need to check with our vendor, because we just changed, and the old system, we could. I don't know about the new system. I would think so.
You can check on that. I think that that might, I don't want to say benefits, perhaps some of the employees, but if it's, if we could do that, I'm not opposed to doing this, if we could add that to it, that would be great.
So you want to add to the motion to approve the overtime pay provision plus check, and if it's doable? Okay.
Sick time and the vacation, any, you know, leave or cruise or anything like that. And that, and it would benefit the employees.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, could I get a motion to approve the amendment of the personnel policy regarding the fire and police department? And as amended to include the accruals, if we can do that. It's been moved, could I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that we amend the personnel policy per what we've just articulated. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Item thirteen A. Motion to change the time limit, I'm sorry, the meeting time of our town council meetings. It was supposed to start at six instead of seven each, each month during our town council meeting. Any addition, anything else you'd like to add to that?
I don't know, clerk, do you have anything? No, I know. We had stated, do we want to pick a month as to what? Do we want to do it in July, or do we want to wait till August? I'm good with July.
Yeah, I don't have a.
Anybody opposed?
And as we discussed in our budget workshop, it's both more convenient for everyone, but trying to be more respectful of our employees' time, those of you that stay late, give you a little more time back in your day.
We move the property second, that we change our meeting times for our monthly town council meeting from six, I mean, from seven to six P M, beginning with our July meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, so ladies and gentlemen, we will then get out a notice letting the citizens know that our next meeting on Ju, in our July meeting will start at six o'clock instead of seven. Thank you, council. All right, item number fourteen, administrative report.
Mayor, Town Council, just to give you a few updates. The town has selected a new outsourcing provider for utility bills. As you are aware, PMSI, who was our previous vendor, closed immediately, and we were seeking vendors that would work with our current utility software. We found them, and it's O S G. They were able this month to release a standard bill for everyone, even if you were on draft, primary email pay, however you, however you get your bill, we still had a paper bill go out to everyone so that everyone could see sort of the standard bill that's going out. We will make enhancements to that bill to more align with what we currently have and getting those together. Normally, that's a ninety-day process, however, they were able to get us some bills in thirty days. So I thank staff for their continuous efforts to get that accomplished. It goes, it does not go unnoticed that, and I'm sure that citizens are appreciative of that. Friday nights on the tar will be June the twentieth. Our group, this event will be Risky Whiskey Ridge, and staff has continued to hold a weekly one-on-one with L G C and P B Mayor's. As last month, they talked about a few things that they needed. As last month, they talked about a few things that they needed. Now I have a weekly one-on-one with PB Mayor's. There's just a few items left, and we'll submit those. And hopefully, they will wrap up 22, 23, and we will immediately begin on 23, 24 audit financials. And then LGC is abreast of where we are with the audit and any other issues that we face.
Mr. Menland, is there any way, we've been doing our weekly stuff with the LGC now for over six months, is there any way that they can come at some point and give us an update, the community, an update as to what else we need to do, or are we almost done with them, or do they do anything?
I don't mind to ask them to come, but I will tell you, until we get all of our audits, then we'll continue on this work. And that's, that's the biggest thing they're monitoring right now is our audits. It's not anything else that they're monitoring other than the audits. And so every week, we talk about where we are with that, but I don't mind to bring them, if you all want to hear from them, that same information. I don't mind to do that, or if you want me to reach out and get a written statement from them that identifies that, I can do that as well and share that. It's totally up to you all, just let me know what you'd like me to do.
In addition to the most recent report, which was just given last, last month...
That was from the auditor, not the LGC.
And the community station looks really nice. Will there be a dedication or a "We're done with that project" or anything like that?
I am sure, yes, ma'am, that will come. And once we, everything is completed, we will do so.
Is there still some things?
A few things. We don't have our CO yet. We're, we're still working on that. We've actually had someone reach out, they would like to use it Friday nights on the Tar, we're just waiting to see if we can get a CO. So that is, but to go back, do you want me to contact LGC to see if they'll come, or do you want me to contact them and see if they can provide a written statement?
Either way, I'd be okay with either.
Either.
Either way, whatever's more convenient for them.
Okay.
And it would just give the community an update, full transparency as to where we're at and how are things going and our goals and... That's...
Okay.
And I have one more thing. On two occasions, I have been told or guided that when we do the budget, that it is to be a unanimous vote. So I've been to two budget meetings. We have another one currently scheduled, I believe, for the 20-something...
23rd.
23rd. And then the final vote would be on the 23rd. So there's a few things that I have been looking at regarding the budget. I have a list here of some things. A lot, most of it is not understanding what debts we actually have and how much is owed. We current, we just did our PTO time payout. I was wondering how much the actual distribution was for that. Currently, we're having some 401 compensation issues, and in the budget, will the interest accrual be put in the budget so that we can fix these problems? These are the things in the budget that I think are important. I would like to know what the accounting is for the community station, for the basketball court, ledgers regarding the fire truck from Lewisburg College. It seems like, I was recently informed that we had a vehicle that was totaled within the town that was not properly insured. I need to know that we are properly insuring our fleet. I would love to have an explanation as to why the town credit card, how it is paid, and why there would ever be a situation where it would be declined in town. And the most important thing to me, considering the fact that I have not seen one financial or no accountability regarding spending, I would like to see the bank statements from July 24th to current day. We're killing it here, folks, and I mean that. And as far as I'm concerned, we're not being fully transparent, and I would like to be more responsible with the town's monies. But if I can have some of this information so I can review it for that budget, it's just, I think that it would help us plan the future of this town to move it forward.
And I'd like to just simply add to that. I had said during this that we were willing to answer any questions. Yes, I made the statement that I would love to have a unanimous vote on this budget. And I also said that if any questions that you had relating to the finance, so we can, and I believe I said, have all the ayes dotted and the t's crossed.
Well, here you go, Mayor. Dots and crosses.
Okay. So that will be discussed in the budget meeting as we discuss it. So you will get your, you will get your questions answered. However, I cannot, yes, I would like to have a unanimous vote, but most importantly, I would like for this budget to be passed. Now, it can pass without a unanimous vote, with the majority vote. So we will do to answer your questions, and then after these questions have been answered, and if you still, it is your prerogative to vote as you see fit. And like all the other times that you'll vote against the budget, for whatever reason, you know, you did not support, so...
All you have to do is ask, I'd be more than happy to tell you.
So, well, you probably have some issues, but we're not going to get into that. The thing is that, that I want is that we answer all the questions that the council has, and we're going to attempt to do that. And then after that is done, if that process is still not to your side of the factory, then you vote as you see fit. Okay. Any others to do with? Okay. The next is the mayor's report. Couple of things, we, I was going to mention that we do have two more sessions before we, one more session before we may take the final vote. And in that session, we will have that, and that will be in the chambers, be in the council chamber.
It'll be posted, but it's Monday, May 23rd, or June 23rd, 6:00 PM, Town Hall Chambers, and then Thursday, June 26th, 6:00 PM, Town Council Chambers. Ideally, one last session to iron out things, put a bow on it, and then to adopt that Thursday. Yes.
Okay. All right. One other thing that I have is, well, is, you know, I've been asked to speak at the Lewisburg High 1975 class reunion. Do that this month. So I look forward to that, speaking with the citizens of that class of that, of that program. So that's, that's basically it for the mayor's report that I have for... So next, item number 16 is the police report. Chief Lincoln.
Mayor, Counsel. Got a couple of things to go over. Didn't want to note that we had a use of force incident. You've got the, the council report that I provided Friday. We had an officer try to take somebody into custody for a larceny offense. A fight ensued, and the individual attempted to grab the officer's firearm, which is a deadly force incident, but thankfully, the officer opted for a less lethal and ended up tasing the individual. And several other officers had to take subject into custody as well. Thankfully, it was just minor injury to the officer and little to no injuries to the suspect. We had several community outreach special events, including a blood drive at the sheriff's office, the Franklin County, I think it was the office of, for seniors, they had a senior day at Riverbend Park. I think our oil and shirts were a little bit of a hit for those that were working. Friday night on the Tar was a success, and we had a 5K at Mariah Param for Stop the Stigma for mental health awareness. The DMV parking issue, I know it has been ongoing for a while. They sent a safety team out to take a look at what was happening, and from my understanding, their response was for us to continue writing parking tickets until they decide whether or not they can lease the empty lot behind DMV for additional parking. I have not, between the doctor's office on Sandalwood and the back parking lot of the DMV, I've not heard any more about it. I've reached out to them. I have not got response back. I'll reach out again tomorrow, see if, see where they're at with that.
Where is it illegal to park?
On Tanglewood from the DMV up the hill toward the Ag Building, you can't park on either, on either side of the street. And on Dogwood, up to Sandalwood on the side of the street or that the daycare is on, you can't park on that side of the street as well.
About that alone, Redman?
As far as I'm, I don't believe there's any signs that they can, yeah, so they can park down there, but the issue is that when they, when individuals park on the street, it's kind of haphazard. Some back ends of cars are all over. We've actually had that parked in front of the no parking sign still. So we're working with DMV to try to solve that problem.
Before you, before you leave, William, Chief Lincoln, I wanted to say this. A citizen sent me over my phone a, he wanted me to thank the police department and in particular, one of our officers. He sent me a picture. I'm not able to really identify him.
It's Schumah.
Yep, officer Schumah.
Yeah. And what he did, ladies and gentlemen, it was a lady who had a problem in the line of sheets where a car knocked off. And he stood there and he watched as this officer came over to assist her, and he pushed her car out of the, out of the way of the drive up, you know, so other cars can get around. And then he took the time to assist them in helping her try to get her car started. You see, this is good community policing. Also, he, he assisted the, the people who were in the car. The citizen wanted to give them water, gave the people in the car water, and then he offered the officer one. Officer, you know, declined, continued to help a citizen with her car. Now, this, this is something, ladies and gentlemen, this gives meaning to, to, to the community as to protect and serve. This highlighted the service part of what our police does, and it also created unlimited amount of goodwill. You know, you can't put a price on this one gesture that this cop did to uplift the whole police department, you know? So I'm very appreciative. Give my, give him my thanks as well, and I would assume the, the council as well for helping us. And continue to do that, and we're very proud of our police force. Okay. Next, our fire report. You can read that in your, in your packet as well. All right. Next is item number 18, Counsel comments. Respect, anything you'd like to say?
Nothing in particular. Thank you all for coming. FYI, this weekend is Father's Day. I have a very special Father. I hope that you guys all enjoy your day that day. Other than that, school's out. Be vigilant. A lot of the kids are out running around, which I think is a wonderful thing. I hope that they all enjoy their summer. And other than that, have a great rest of your week. Thank you.
Counselwoman Wood.
Thank you all for coming out. I was going to say, also, school's out, be mindful of all the little kids. Next week, there are some that will be going back for summer camp, and just keep those kids, media players who didn't pass EPOG from the medical education. Yeah, so just keep those kids, and just keep them in shape. And your personal, and it's a good, special goal.
Counselwoman Stone.
I'm going to take a moment of privilege to brag a little bit. Next week, I'm going to Mexico to celebrate my 50th wedding anniversary to my lovely wife.
Yes. Congratulations. Okay. Nothing else? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Been moved?
Second.
And properly seconded. And we now adjourn our June meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, citizens, for coming out.